What are we doing?
It's been great. How are you?
Good, Liz. Was there any overnight snowfall?
It was raining. I'm worried about the structural integrity of our igloo.
So this is what you do. All you gotta do is put like a candle in there or something for like a half an hour. And it will ice up and solidify. You could literally jump on the top of and stomp up and down and it will not collapse. And so that's how you make it so it doesn't, but then when you start breathing, your breath makes it also so that it solidifies and ices up and so it did. I'm sure it's happened, but I've never heard of it happen. Cause I've been on a million of these.
I guess it it's the angle of the wall. So I mean, it's load bearing consistently. I get that. I I was sort of hoping it would ice over too. Uh, didn't have the guts to let anybody sleep out there though.
It defies logic is what it does, especially when your kiddos are small. You know what I mean? I totally get where you're coming from. I think I was probably ten when I did it for the first time.
Yeah, mine are too little for that.
Yeah.
You're not quite there. It was fun though. It was, it's fun making those. Yeah.
Maybe earlier, not much earlier though. I think it's about, I think ten is when I did my first time. And my mom wasn't happy either. Just FYI. She was like, I don't know, this is sort of weird.
Yeah, you know, making an igloo is like a bucket list thing. I always have wanted, I have like a list of random things I want to do. It was on there and I, I mean, it took a while to build that. I mean, it took like six hours probably. It's a two person, you know, thing. One person has to be on the inside and like, you know, when you put the top on the igloo, it's like scary. You're feeling like so claustrophobic.
Right. I've never done it the way you did it. I've always done it with, when there was like a massive snowbank. And we've actually dug into the side of the snowbank. Um, that's how we've always.
Gotcha. Yeah, this thing's cool. It's called the Ice Box and it's like, it um, it, it creates a spiral around like a, a central point. Hey, I'll stop talking about igloos now.
I think it's pretty cool. Very cool.
Are you gonna make the motions from there?
Can you, um, I can, can you can handle it? Go for the goal, Brad.
You want me to do it?
You're the man. Go for it. Hey Brad, did you get the updated agenda for the, the workshop where there uh, item five on the consent needs to be taken off? Do you see that?
Yeah, remove item five from the consent agenda.
I think that's the only change.
What was that last part, Craig?
I believe that that's the only change on the agenda on both agendas, actually.
You won't use any of these like wrist, these little guard things with mouses and keyboards?
Having problems?
I think I'm injured. Too much typing.
I wonder if you have like tennis elbow of the wrist.
Kind of the same thing, I think.
I have a band. I'll, I'll drop my, off my band that you can wear tomorrow. I'll fix it.
You need ergonomic keyboard, Joe.
So I just got one of those. Which is, which is kind of nice, but I, I got one of these little pads and I think it's like it makes it worse for the mouse. Supposed to help and I don't know. Can't quite figure out how to make it not strain. Keyboard's great. That helps a ton.
Has nothing to do with old age, so don't worry about that.
No. Thank you. Appreciate that. Nothing at all.
We got Luke in chambers?
Yes, we're just waiting for him to.
User to log in.
No worries, brother. No worries.
Council will call this meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, February sixteenth, four thirty-four PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Yes, sir.
Clarification. Don't we need to remove an item from the consent in order to continue?
No, Mr. Mayor, we would, uh, when you take consent, you can act on it at that time.
Got it. Mr. Mayor, I approve the motion then.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The guys have it. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
As Councilman Cavanagh was referencing, we would like to move item five from the consent agenda and uh, move that down for action later. And I would then move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor.
So, Cavanagh.
Appreciate the eloquency of Councilmember Hoagland and I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with number five moved off. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The guys have it and the motion is agreed to. Next item is items moved from the consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just a note of explanation. They are working on the landscaping plan. They need an additional week to get that completed. So I would uh, move that we just hold item five to uh, action on the consent agenda next week.
Second motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second uh, to continue this item to next week. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The guys have it and the motion is continued. Uh, next up is item twelve under our department commissioner reports this week. It's the city attorney's office annual report. Now I'll turn this over to Mr. Nary.
This is not up on the screen.
Try that bottom right. The monitor's probably off.
The monitor's on. There we go. All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my privilege to be here today and give our annual update. I know you look forward to this all year. Um, it's always enjoyable. I will thank all of my team for being here. Ted's online and on YouTube. Michelle Albertson is here in the room. Emily and Andrea are both online um, at home. This has been a year like no other. I think we all agree and we've all heard that term enough. This is, uh, I have to thank Emily for the template here. She's the one that found this very COVID centric template for this presentation. And it seemed very fitting for this particular year. Um, again, our mission statement, um, you've seen. I advance the slide here, Chris. Can I just click it? Can we, can we back up a couple? We're going the wrong way. There we go. Okay. There we go. Okay. So here's our team. Uh, this is early on in COVID. This is us trying to meet online. Uh, so uh, again, our team is uh, the same folks that you've seen. Ted, Emily, Andrea, Michelle, myself. Uh, Councilwoman Strater is our liaison for the second year. She drew the short straw two years in a row, it appears. Um, but this is us meeting from home. You can see everybody's got their home in the background and uh, can see how that all looks for everyone. Uh, again, unlike most any other experience, I think any of us have ever seen. This, this mouse is just not clicking.
I try just the right arrow on your keyboard. I wouldn't.
Oh, right arrow. Okay. I'll do that. Okay. All right. Again, here's our mission statement. I added a little twenty twenty addition of COVID will not define us or deter us. One of the things that we felt was greatly important from our office this year was we weren't going to blame COVID for things. We're not going to blame COVID that we can't get things done or we can't get our work accomplished or we can't get deadlines met. Uh, that's not who we are. That's not who we are as a city. That's not who we are as a team. And so we didn't. We got all our work done. We got things done on time. We got our ordinances done. We've got contracts done. Everything that makes the city function that we touch got done. And we figured out how to do it and we had to figure it out pretty quickly in a much different way than we'd ever done it before. So I asked each of my team to tell us a little bit of what twenty twenty meant for them. How did it affect them? You know, both personally and professionally and what, what was different about it? And I included those slides in here and I won't read the whole thing. I did highlight a few things. Uh, here Ted mentions, not only we talk uh, regularly as a team um, on teams and then we also get everything done and functioning. So we still function as a team, even though we aren't all physically in the same place. I think recently Michelle and I were in the office of Tickle Day and it happened that Ted came by for something and happened that Emily came by for something and having that Andrea came by to pick up something. It was five of us was here for the first time since last March. Um, we just function, found a different way to function as a group. And again, it's a testament to all of my teammates and them wanting to make that work, wanting to make it function, making sure again, the work can get done without a, a break. Uh, again, looking forward to all of us being in the office together again soon. I think that is the goal of us as well as many other of our teams around the city. So what I did is we tried to highlight the things, both what we do and the things over the last year that were very unusual from what we normally do. And as you'll see, the list of that's pretty long. I don't want to make it seem like if we took off the unusual, we don't have enough to do because there are plenty of things to do. But if you look at some of the things I tried to highlight, you know, um, again, we became experts and, and state leaders, frankly, in this particular area of how to deal with this, how to get information out to the public, how to get information out to the employees, how to but navigate through very confusing orders and very conflicting orders that we were getting and how to do things and when to do things and and having to do those very rapidly and, and, and a very changing environment, all of you are aware of. It was constantly readdressing it from the governor's office, central district health, uh, local leaders and how, what's the best thing for everybody and trying to figure it out literally on the fly. Um, if I recall originally, the mayor had proposed early March as an experiment to try to see what it would be like to have to work remotely. And then suddenly we had to work remotely. There was no experiment anymore. We were actually going to have to do this and how to figure out how to take home desks, chairs, computers, printers, scanners, whatever we need to do to make things function. Uh, we had to figure it out in a very short time and, and a testament to both everybody in the city and especially IT and making things work and happen. And it being pretty seamless for our, for most people and how things happened. But this was just some of the things that we did just for the mayor's office, your council for the commissions and trying to keep functionality of the city going. This was the extremely unusual. This was the night we had the protest out front, which I think I'm actually myself and the custodians who actually saw it other than on the news, because we were the only people in the building. Chris was on the other side of the building, so he didn't even notice it was going on at the time because he was in his office and I was up in mine. So that again, extremely unusual situation for the last year. So again, what did twenty twenty mean? You know, the shutdown period, we learned how to do our jobs differently, as Michelle stated here. The challenges have been something to I guess, look at as, as a, a mild success. Obviously, there's nothing that can overcome the tragedy of twenty twenty for hundreds of thousands of people. But the workplace world shifted and we figured it out and, and, and we still maintained our connectivity. We still maintain our ability to meet and be efficient and, and many of our folks in my team especially, but in many out of the city will say, they found much more ways of being efficient, working from home that we didn't imagine was really feasible to a year and a half ago. And now it's like, it's very feasible for many people to do that because there's less distraction. They're very, can be very focused. Um, they can be very directed because they don't have the, the interruptions and the phone calls and the people walking by and things like that. So they're at home. They can be very focused. So it can work and a work-life balance for people in a lot of the functions of the city. Again, clerk's office, open meeting law compliance. Again, a completely new area to deal with. The governor gave us a little bit of relief on having in-person meetings with everybody for a period of time. But we still had to figure out how to do this. A testament to Chris and his office on making all of these functional platforms work. And if you recall, out of the entire year, uh, since, since my last report, we missed one meeting. One meeting we had to cancel because we couldn't get the Zoom and the YouTube and all that to work at the same time. And that's it. I mean, everything else got functioned and worked and things got held. We held hearings and things, things happened. So again, we had six hundred and sixty-four public records responses. So this, you know, is a growing rapid area that we are seeing now. Again, as the police reports, they get about three thousand over there a year. These are just the ones that come through here. So these are ones from the, through the clerk's office. And, and my folks, my team, primarily Emily and Andrea, touch every one of those. Now, many of those nights would be, yep, you got it, send it. But many times it is much more complicated than that. We had one this year that's related to a lawsuit that uh, ended up being, I think a thousand dollars in fees of all the documents that had to be looked through before we could release it. It was hundreds and hundreds of hours of time for that. So it, it really is becoming a very active, busy area for us. Yeah, human resources, as you can imagine, again, our, our, our team is helping advise human resources and how to address all of these employees' concerns and fears and what to do and when to do it and how to do it. And so it was very um, much a, a time-consuming exercise to make sure we try to get it right and try to do the right thing for everybody and try to provide them the best legal advice in an area that has very little legal. You know, we're looking at, at case law from a hundred years ago to figure out, can we do that or not do that? And then should we do that or not do that? So again, very busy, very new, uh, very exciting, very interesting, but a much different world than we were living in a year ago. Uh, one other thing we did that although I, I put it under the usual, but it was a lot of effort is the city policy handbook has been in a rewrite stage with HR and legal for the last, at least, well, aggressively for the last year. Uh, lots of time. Andrea's been the lead for us on that. Uh, Laura Lee from the HR department. Uh, lots and lots of hours to get this work done and accomplishing. We were nearly there. Uh, we had to do a rewrite on the veterans preference and Andrea worked with Gowan Field and the, and the guard out there to make sure our policy on employee and veterans' use of their time uh, for our employees matched up with what the federal requirements are and how they get compensated and what time off they get and how that all works. And we updated our policy to make sure we were on track with the federal government. Again, a lot of time and effort to get that done and get it done right. Uh, finance department, again, the CARES Act, CARES Act funding, how do we use it? Can we use it? What do we use it for? Uh, lots of questions. Um, answers were sporadic at times, uh, inconsistent at times, vague at times. Again, uh, it was a lot of effort and time to try to again, help finance, help Todd and, and the finance department deal with all of these and create policies very quickly on what we would use these for and how we could use it and make the best use of taxpayer dollars. Um, that we really felt were necessary and, and because of the changes that we had due to COVID that we had to do. So again, uh, uh, another new area of, of expertise for us. So as you know, we all know Emily and Emily had a lot to say, but it's all of it. I didn't cut hardly anything. What Emily doesn't like to be edited. Sorry. So as you know, we all know Emily and Emily had a lot to say, but it's all of it. I didn't cut hardly anything. What Emily doesn't like to be edited. Sorry, Emily. But also there wasn't really anything to edit. I'm obviously not going to read it all, but I mean, there are things, you know, as Emily noted in the first one, it was a, a year where we came experts in areas we're completely unfamiliar with. Also, we got to see people's homes. We got to see what their bookshelves look like or what their, what their living room looks like. Kind of interesting. What kind of plants they have? Do they have fish? Do they have a dog? If you had a dog in the meeting, you got extra points. So it was very interesting to see people in a different light and an opportunity. But also again, as we saw, there were so many things, not just in the city, but, but all over the city of people really showing grace and compassion to others because they needed it and people needed it. And people did a lot of things out of their way to make somebody feel better because they needed it and, and both sides needed it. And so it was an interesting year from that respect because we got to see again, people in a different light and people in a different manner than we had before. The fire department. Again, we did our collective labor agreement. It should be on next Tuesday for ratification by you. It, the union is having a, a meeting on Monday night to ratify the contract that we came to. Thanks again to Councilmember Hogland and all of his time and effort. Councilmember Burt also spent some time and Councilmember Schroder or Strater. Again, great assistance from the council to make this come through. It took us only, I think, seven months. But you know, lots, lots of places take a lot longer than that. So I think we got a good contract for you. I think we've got a good agreement with the union. I think they would agree. And so that was not necessarily unusual. It was a little different this last year than it has been. On the unusual side, again, HIPAA, ADA, emergency powers, screening, enforcement of these orders, vaccination protocols. I mean, all things we've never really encountered to the degree we encounter them now. And again, the science has changed. The information with the science has changed greatly. So it's been quite an interesting year in that regard. Police department. Again, I could not highlight the park arrest. Obviously, that was a significant moment. That case is still ongoing. It's still pending. The attorney general's office is prosecuting that case. So that's still an outstanding matter. But again, we had a lot of code enforcement and interpretation of orders and how to deal with these things and the context from the public and their concerns in the schools. So it was definitely a challenge to make sure that we as a legal team could both be conversant in those issues as well as to help advise everybody on an area that nobody felt very comfortable in and trying to make sure we could navigate through the day. Parks and Rec, again, huge, huge area of time and effort on all of our parks for our team because we had playgrounds to close. We had programs to cancel. Had lots of refunds to process. I mean, you know, thank goodness for the parks staff and Steve and his whole team and processing through all of that, events that were canceled and vendors that were disappointed. Lots and lots of changes that we saw in a very, very short window of time and impacting everyone and how we do things. So you can see by just that list how many different things changed slightly or greatly because of it. And in the middle of that, we also transferred the golf course to the city and got that process all completed within a very small window of time as well. So again, it was a very interesting year. And as you can see in every single department, you can see where COVID has touched people to some degree. Community development. Again, we had the small business grant program that we helped develop with, with the mayor's office and community development and Tori. So it was really a, a challenge because again, it was a very short window of timeframe. There's a, a great deal of effort by Tori and Crystal to weed through those applications and help our, the business community to kind of foster through that. And in the middle of that, we added a new, a renewal district in downtown. So again, lots of things to do and lots of things to do that we normally do as well as things that we don't normally do on top of that. You know, 2020, I think Andrea's comment here that I left in was so profound to me. I, I, I didn't want to edit it or take it out. It says, it has a profound and prolonged sobering effect. And I think it does for all of us. And I think that's what we saw in the workplace is it was a change and not that it was a bad change, as I've said, but it is a change that we didn't anticipate and have really weathered, I think, as much as possible. And it probably does feel like being stuck on spin cycle in a washing machine for a year. It's not quite over. I think we're in the 14th month of 2020 is what it feels like. So we're not quite, not quite through it all yet. So Public Works, you know, we, we, we sort of looked at this one and, and they are, you know, steady and consistent. I mean, that is Public Works to a T. They still purchase things. Now they switched purchasing items and, and PPE and things like that. But also the other projects they had, many of them could continue to go through. The contracts go through. We processed all of those. And on top of that, we went and bought 40 more acres for the wastewater plant that we're going to be adding to the, to the plant in the future as well as we had those two bore strikes that we've talked about and dealt with those two, both with a land with an appeal to the state board as well as a potential appeal to court. On top of that, we got that resolved. We also had the other one on, on 10 Mile that we also got resolved. So again, there was a, some fairly unusual circumstances on top of the general workload that we normally get through Public Works. So we do the kind of year-to-year comparison and I did ask, you know, was there a particular reason for some of these? And, and there really isn't. I mean, there's not an identifiable driver of a lot of these. I think, for example, development agreements, it looks like we did a little bit, a little bit less. I think though, you, I think Michelle told me in January, we had 20, no 10, sorry, 10 in, in January. So some of it's based on the cycle of the development. So it really has nothing to do with us. That's the same thing for the easements. It looks like we have a huge growth in easements, but actually I think two or three years before we had about 100 and something, 125 or something. So again, it's really development driven. It's not driven by us. It's when they choose to develop it, then then the easements are necessary either for the utilities or their construction schedule or phasing. So those things are pretty cyclical, but as you can see, we do have some changes and you know, we're going to continue to see that same level of growth if not more. I crib claims. Again, those were fairly steady. As you can see, we had a little bit more situations of damages to city's property, but not a great deal more. I attribute some of these things that are less is because again, people for a lot, for a certain period of time did less. They didn't go out much. They didn't do much. So they weren't running into things and not getting in, in breaking things. So some of that really is fairly static and, and pretty consistent year over year. Again, I think as a team, we've done a good job of catching these things, reporting them properly, getting them, you know, in our system so that we can track them a lot better. I think the system has gotten much better over the last few years. And now I, I have a little pause for a moment. With us online is Denise Udink and Kevin Borger from the city attorney's office in Boise. As you all know, they provide our prosecution and police services and have since 2002. I'll turn it over to Denise and to Kevin to give their, their report.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Mayor, council members, it's really our privilege to be here today to talk with you. We always enjoy coming every year to give you an update on the prosecution and police services that we provide for the city of Meridian. And I don't know if any of you know how long we've had this contract. Any guesses by anyone? Anybody know? Maybe Joe, Councilmember Borton might know.
Four, 14 years, 16 years.
It's been a long time. 2002 is how long we've had this contract. So yeah, it's been a, it's been a long time. It's been a great relationship, I think, between our office and the city of Meridian. So again, we just appreciate it. We do try to work really closely with the police department and we're excited for Chief Bastrechea. He'll do a great job. And we also try to work really closely with Bill Neri's office and, and those folks that work there, just so that we can make sure we're providing the, the services that Meridian really needs. So we appreciate the relationship. I need to echo some of what Bill Neri talked about with COVID as it affected everybody. It affected our office as well. And we really had to quickly learn how to keep doing business and keep getting the work done remotely. So our office has actually been closed for the most part to in-person working. So we've been working remotely ourselves. And court has been being conducted pretty much virtually remotely, which has been a very interesting experience. So we're getting ready to start up jury trials again, which will be an interesting experience. We haven't been doing them since March of last year. So those prosecutors that haven't done trials for a while are going to have to brush off their skills and get ready for trial. But I just want to quickly give you some information just about the prosecution piece. And then I'll turn it over to Kevin Borger to talk about police advice. I'm going to try to share my screen, so I hope this works. I'm not as proficient as some people. So can everybody see that home screen? Okay. Perfect. So again, we're just here to talk about information and updating on the contract. Let me see if I can figure out how to forward it. I apologize. Just one second. Well, let me see if I can figure out how to do this. Just a second. I apologize. Okay. Did that, did that work? It should have forwarded to the next slide. Can everybody see that? Okay. So just to give you a, a little bit of background about our office. So our office, we have 15 prosecutors and what that really means is 14 and a half. One of our prosecutors is part-time. And then we have one full-time victim witness coordinator in-house in our office that provides victim services for Meridian cases as well as Boise cases. She primarily focuses on domestic violence-related cases, but she can also provide services on other types as well. Our prosecutors handle five full-time judicial calendars, but then we also rotate amongst other calendars as well. We do have a specialty court, domestic violence court, which is now full-time for us. It used to be a part-time calendar, but just due to the number of cases that are going in, we have created a, a full-time calendar for that. And then we have other types of calendars that we cover primarily for in custody arraignments. We have something called FTA court that we cover and that is for people that have warrants that are outstanding. They can make a request to come in, appear in front of a judge and get their warrant quashed or possibly get their case resolved at that hearing. And then we also have our infraction calendar, which actually keeps us pretty busy. We have a, a number of court trials that we, that we handle as part of the infraction calendar. We also have settlement conferences and we also have what's called an online dispute portal that we created in our office. When COVID shut everything down, we didn't have the ability to go in and have settlement conferences with people that wanted to contest their infraction tickets. So we had to create a different format for them to contact us and to be able to negotiate those cases. And so we do have an online portal that we advise people about Meridian police officers have information on their e-sites that will tell people how to contact us through our portal. So we have a lot of inquiries that come through, through the portal, just to talk about infraction cases and see if there's a way we can resolve those cases short of a trial. And then we also do have the settlement conferences again. So the court just instituted that again. Those are all remote still, but we also have an opportunity there to talk with people that want to contest their traffic tickets and see if there's anything that we can do for them. So those are just some of the calendars that we cover. It does keep us pretty busy, that's for sure. With respect specifically to prosecution services, there are a number of things that we provide for Meridian. So they're kind of broken up into what do we do in-house versus what do we do through the court system? But essentially we are reviewing every single misdemeanor citation that gets issued by police. We review every single misdemeanor arrest that is made by police just to make sure that everything is, is compliant with evidence and probable cause standards and things like that, that we have a duty to, to honor. And then we also, for those cases where officers are not able to take any sort of enforcement action, or if they not, if they're not quite sure what to do, they can send those reports to our office and we have a screening team of three prosecutors that reviews all of those reports that are taken by officers where they haven't otherwise taken any law enforcement action. And we can decide whether we want to charge, who we want to charge, and do we do that by a summons, which is a written notification, or whether we do that by an arrest warrant. We also provide victim services. I talked about the in-house victim witness coordinator that we have. And so she handles a lot of our domestic violence-related cases. But we also work in conjunction with the victim witness coordinators that are employed by the Meridian Police Department in making sure that victims are notified of the rights that they have in criminal cases. We have contact with them. We can meet with them. We provide notice to them about court hearings and plea offers and things like that. So a lot of of services to victims. And then if they have other types of needs, we can also provide resources to them through our victim witness coordinators. And then at court, of course, we handle a number of hearings. I'm going to show you some numbers about specific hearings in just a second, but I just wanted to give you an overview of the types of hearings that our prosecutors handle. We, we handle the case from beginning to end. So at the beginning, which is an arraignment, all the way through adjudication and then even beyond that, sometimes our cases get appealed after conviction. And so we handle all of those appeals. Sometimes offenders will file a post-conviction action. And so we handle from beginning to end and then beyond. We do discovery review. Discovery is the process where we provide the defense with the information that we have in our file, police reports, audio recordings and things like that, just to make sure that, that they have the information that we have with respect to the case. And then of course, we work closely with police about preparing officers for court, preparing them for testimony and, and things like that. So a lot of things happen kind of at the, the back end of, of these cases. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a, an understanding of the number of cases that we open and how many of those are attributed to Meridian City. So this chart shows that our office in 2020 opened 12,572 cases. That is total misdemeanor and infraction. Of those cases, 3,763 were from the city of Meridian. There were 16,939 charges within those 12,572 cases that were opened. So a total charges opened for Meridian City, 5,153. And then these are the number of hearings that our prosecutors handled total in 2020, 29,979 hearings for 15 prosecutors, 14 and a half. And of those, 8,425 were for Meridian cases. So I'm not a math person for sure, but roughly one-third of our caseload is attributable to the city of Meridian. So we, we certainly appreciate that. Just to give you a little bit of historical information. So this chart goes back to 2010 and it just kind of shows you, you know, from year to year, how many charges we've opened for the city of Meridian. So you can see right here in 2020, we opened 5,153 charges. That's down a little bit from 2019 and I actually was pleasantly surprised by the numbers because I, I was expecting a little bit that COVID would have a, a pretty significant impact on just the number of cases that were being opened. And it's probably going to take us a couple of years to really see the impact that COVID has had, but for the most part, it's not a huge drop in the number of charges. You know, a few years ago, we had more and, and I'm not really sure, you know, how, how that trend has happened or what's caused these different trends, but just a little bit of information to give you a historical perspective about the charges that are coming in. This next slide is just a breakdown by category of the misdemeanor offenses that we see from Meridian. So this is just a pie chart. As you can see right here, really the traffic cases are what constitute the biggest categories of cases. So we've got traffic misdemeanors here. Traffic infractions are, are the biggest category of charges. But then we've broken it down a little bit further. The miscellaneous category can be things like probation violations or contems that happened post, post-adjudication or once a case is closed, somebody isn't compliant with their sentence. And so they'll come back on a probation violation or a contempt. Parking, zoning, these would be the code enforcement cases that we work with domestic violence, DUIs are another big one. Controlled substances are, are pretty big for Meridian and then property crimes down here. So this is just to give you a little bit of an idea of the categories of offenses that we see from Meridian charges. And then we always like to throw in this top 10 and it's a little bit backwards because the, the top 10, it's backwards. So number one is down here at the bottom. But for Meridian cases from 2020, the number one charge that was charged with was possession of parent for now, yeah. And then they go up from there. Another big one you can see is DUIs are a pretty big chunk. Domestic battery, funny enough, is, is not quite as big as you might expect, although that is a Domestic battery, funny enough, is, is not quite as big as you might expect, although that is a, a very important charge for our office to prosecute. And then disturbing the peace here with ninety-nine, but you'll see speeding, which is an infraction is in here. So just a smattering of charges in the top ten. But we always like to throw that in just so you can kind of see what's happening with Meridian cases. Now, before I turn the time over to Kevin, I just wanted to stand for questions if anybody had any questions for me.
So any questions at this time?
Oh, hey Denise?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, just one quick question. I think two slides back when you had the, the pie chart with, with all the charges. I know that oftentimes when there's a charge, it's not solely just that charge, but there's oftentimes two or three different charges. How does your office break that down in the pie chart if, for instance, if you, somebody's pulled over for speeding, but they also have a controlled substance on them? How do you guys, you know, quantify that in that pie chart? Are they each separate, separated out, or is it the lead charge that you guys are, are classifying?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council member, is it Kavanagh? I'm sorry, I can't see everybody's face on my screen. Yes, yes. So they'll be broken out still, even if they're opened up in one case, our system will still apportion them into the category that they belong to. So the, the controlled substance will go into that category and the speeding will go into the, the speeding category or the traffic infraction category.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Strater.
Um, thank you Denise. I was, caught my attention, your comment about jury trials being delayed by COVID. I was just curious, what's the, you know, backlog of that looking like? And does that just mean that cases are delayed? And is there an estimate on that or any further info on when that might get cleared up?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, there is a significant misdemeanor backlog for jury trials. So what we are doing right now is we are putting together lists of all of the cases that have been pending trial since the court basically stopped doing jury trials last March. So, and then we're trying to prioritize them according to what is, what are the top ones that need to go to trial first? Anecdotally, I haven't pulled the list together yet. Our prosecutors are working on that right now. But I would say that we probably have between all of our judges, close to two hundred jury trials that are backlogged. When you consider that some of our judges are only going to have one, two, maybe four jury trial days a month, it's going to take us a while to get through those cases, so.
You?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and begin. Kevin Borger, it's my pleasure to speak to you again, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm trying to remember how many years it's been, and I, I can't recall, but I've been able to work with Meridian for a number of years now. The main thing for me regarding COVID is that I haven't been able to come into the office. And one of the things I enjoyed most is three afternoons of the week, I would spend time at the police department. And that allowed me personal interaction with the officers and just a lot more, increased the ability to have the questions that just come up previous shift or something, and those aren't as easily answered now. But still at home, and the computer has allowed for email questions and all of that continues. A little bit of background, I actually live in Meridian and have done so since nineteen eighty-six. So working with Meridian is more of very personal for me because these are my people, I feel like. And I've been privileged to work for the city of Boise for thirty years now. Bill Neri hired me back in nineteen ninety-one. And so I know Michelle, Emily, Ted and I shared an office back in Boise. So very comfortable working with your legal staff, and I appreciate them all very much. And feel like we have a very good working relationship. One of the things is that if I ever feel like the police are asking me to do something, I contact Bill to make sure I'm not overstepping our bounds because I know there is a line there that we don't want to cross. But you can see on the screen there are the various things that I'm responsible for, and the legal questions still do come in. And we work with those. The weapon dispositions is probably one of the consistent ones that happens every, every week. And then we go through those. I went with the next slide, Denise. Regular legal updates, I found in Kim, Kim Smith is my supervisor, and she also is available for questions. And there are some things that the police go directly to her for. And one of those, she became the go-to person regarding protests. And I know she shared that information with the police department as well. But she asked, I do legal updates. So every month, beginning, I've been giving the police department an overview of the legal cases that have come down from the previous month with regarding Idaho, the Ninth Circuit in the United States Supreme Court. So since I'm not there in person in order to answer the questions or just bring it up in the way I used to, provided in a paper format and then address any questions that come from there. Briefing bulletins, if there's something that can't wait or it's more unusual, we'll bring that up. One of the ones is, is still lingering, if you remember State v. Clark, is one thing that we continue to struggle with in how to deal with. And that's where officers, if the crime, misdemeanor crime does not happen in their presence, they are not allowed to initiate an arrest. And I noticed just today, in fact, that there's discussion in the legislature to have a constitutional amendment that might address that. So that's certainly something that's encouraging. But we work very closely with the officers on best practices on how to address that with the citizens, how they can make sure they're in compliance with the rules as they've come down. And then the case law is continuing to progress, and so we keep track of that. Classroom training, I've spent a considerable amount of time getting ready for that. And then Command Staff decided not to have that in-person. I was scheduled to do that in February, so that's going to be put off a little bit. They haven't determined a date for me. So the work is done, the topics are ready. It's just a matter of when we're going to do that. So we're prepared to do that whenever, whenever they determine is appropriate. Okay, next slide Denise. Here's just an example of one of the bulletins done and talks about exceptions, custodial, I'm having, my eyesight isn't as good. But anyway, a lot of times we'll give a scenario and then also an answer, some notes, and then case law obviously that goes along with that. So that just gives you an idea of the, of the format and then allows the officers to digest that and then ask any questions that they have. Okay Denise? Past trainings, we, use of force is always a big one because we know that leads to problems with the citizens. We're very cognizant of the important aspect that plays. And case law describes for us how to deal with that. And one of the things that comes up a lot is the people with mental difficulties. And so I've, I've trained to multiple areas on how to deal with the mentally ill. And I think we're doing well in that area. Some of the different ways you deal with those folk is very important. And so they also have been trained on that. We've talked about body worn cameras and how effective those can be, not only in prosecuting cases, but also in liability situations where police departments all over the US have been able to show that one person's perspective isn't, isn't actually shown on the, on the video. So those have actually been very helpful. Okay Denise? Available, with the advent of the cell phone, I am available twenty-four seven, and I do get calls in the evening occasionally. And the officers are respective of my time, but they do call occasionally. On the other side of the prosecutors, there's an on-call team. And so anytime there's a question, but particularly if there's a need for a warrant, and blood draw warrants are a big one. And the on-call prosecutors handle that as well as arrest warrants. The Clark situation I mentioned earlier, one way of dealing with that is to call the magistrate judge and ask for an arrest warrant while dealing with the individual so that the officer isn't arrested on his own authority, but he has the backing of the judge after hearing probable cause statements in order to execute that warrant. And so that's a service that's provided, and that's available twenty-four seven. Okay Denise? So when you wrap all that up, I think the, the city of Boise is, is very proud to represent Meridian. And when the prosecutors go to court, one thing Denise didn't mention is that, and I did a lot of prosecuting in my day when Meridian was part of the, part of my caseload. There's no distinguishing between a Meridian case and a Boise case. The prosecutor often won't. If they do notice, they don't, don't distinguish. Their cases are handled the same. And very proud to be able to say that we work for the city, with the city of Meridian, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hoagland.
Quick question for Mr. Borger, based on his long experience with Meridian and, and as what you just wrapped up there. Would you say this, this type of contract and this relationship is a win-win for, for the office there in Boise as well as our citizens in Meridian?
Well, I certainly think so. It allows the prosecutors. I think we have additional, a couple of people on staff. When you look at the numbers, I think it's certainly a win for Meridian when you consider how many additional people you would have to hire to handle that sort of a caseload. The prosecutors in the office are able to simulate the cases without the additional burden of running from courtroom to courtroom. And yet they gain the experience of dealing with different officers and perhaps a slightly different way of, of doing things, but not that, not that much. But I know they certainly have appreciated the work, and I know I do.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Knight?
How do I get my, my presentation back up? Kevin kind of buried the lead there a little bit too. This might be Kevin's last report. Kevin's planning on retiring here in this late spring before summer. So he's going to be passing the torch over there. Kevin is a great person and a great attorney and a great person to work with. And, you know, when I first got promoted at the city of Boise back in nineteen ninety-one, I had to hire two attorneys. And the first person I hired was Ted. And the third person I hired was Kevin. And it never let me forget, I wasn't the second person. But I think after thirty years, it's worked out for Kevin pretty well. So I congratulate Kevin on, on being able to retire and move on to the next phase of his career. He has been a great asset. The, the contract, I'll, I'll add to your question, Councilmember Hoagland. Now, again, thirty-five years ago was a lot different world we lived in. But I was the Meridian prosecutor for three and a half years, and running from courtroom to courtroom all day, every day is very exhausting. And you'd never feel like you're very good at it. Getting folks that this is what they do, they do it very well, very professionally, day in and day out. This is part of their work, part of how they do business, is a great asset to the city. It's a great asset to the city of Boise. As you can see, we use, we're about a third of their caseload. So it does help their teams, it does help us. So it is a very good marriage we've had now for almost twenty years. So I appreciate Denise and her team and Kevin and all the folks at the city attorney's office. They've taken a huge burden off of us. Again, those three thousand public records requests that go through the police department, again, those all have some touch to the city attorney's office. Again, it may be a very simple, yes, that's the right information, send it. Too much more complicated requests. So they do provide a great service to the city for a very fair value that we pay. To wrap up, again, my thoughts on the last year. Again, I am incredibly appreciative to work for this city. I've lived here for thirty-five years. I am really feel like I'm a Meridian guy, and this is what I do. And I don't think people remember I worked anywhere else anymore. I feel very privileged to work for the mayor and council in the city. I feel very good for the city and what we do. And I especially appreciate the team that I work with every day. We're in our seventeenth year now, Michelle and I and Ted. Emily's been with us fifteen, Andrew's been with us thirteen, so going on fourteen. So we have a very good team. We work well together. We know each other very well. We know what we do well, and we know who does, who does what the best. And, and if we can't figure it out, we usually give it to Emily, right? I think that's kind of the way we tend to think. But we really do all get what Meridian is about and what the Meridian way means. And this year, again, I think I can't emphasize enough how important it was to us and I think to our community to keep things going. The development community was very appreciative that we could keep things going. The business community was very appreciative that we could keep things going. And, and as much as people don't know most of the time what the legal department does, because I get that question all the time. What do you guys do all day? How in the world is there work for four attorneys every day? And, you know, I could send them my presentation, but they just don't know that, again, staffing all your meetings, reviewing every single document in some form, either we wrote it or we reviewed it of every single thing we do, whether we're buying things, selling things, whatever it is, we have some level of touch to that in some fashion. And because we've been here for such a long period of time, generally, we're the ones that have done it. It wasn't done by some other attorney from ten years ago or twenty years ago. Our team found ways to remain connected. It definitely helped that we have a, a long-term history together. That's certainly helpful. We had an intern last summer for a short period of time. It was a little clunky. But we did the best we could, and, and, and she was a great intern and did a great job for us. But it wasn't quite the same level of experience because, again, we generally have two people in the office every day. I'm here every day. Generally, there's one more person right now that comes in every day so that we can make sure we can be responsive as necessary to any of the needs. But again, Teams works great, email works great, the phone works. All of those methods of communication, we found that we didn't think would work very well do. And so we could keep things going. And I think, again, our community appreciated that. I think, you know, I personally appreciated that. So I don't have anything else unless you have some questions for me. Or again, all of our team is online. So if you have any questions for me, otherwise, again, it's a privilege to be here for another year, privileged to be able to present this to you, to show you a little snapshot of what our year was like.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Bill or are you opening up all of your staff to questions?
If, if they can. I think Ted's only on the phone, so it's a little harder for Ted.
Okay. Michelle, she's here too.
Michelle's here, so yeah, if you have a question for Michelle, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Kavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, not a, not a question, just a comment. And I always appreciate your presentation, but I think for all of us, it's a good reminder of what the last thirteen months has looked like. And your ability kind of feels like a lot, but you've done a great job of kind of responding to every curveball that past year has thrown the city and your department. And you guys just make it look really, really easy. And by doing so, that makes the city look better, makes the council, the mayor, employees all look better. I know it's not easy. I know it takes a lot of time and attention. I just wanted to say thanks to you and Michelle and your team. You guys really are a, a solid team and a good example of what a legal department can look like. Thank you.
Councilwoman Strater.
I, I echo those comments as well, and I don't think you guys really skipped a beat, Bill. And it's been great getting to know everybody. I guess, looking at two years, it feels like this past year, the workload has been a lot higher. Do you think that's the exception or the new normal? Do you feel like you're adequately resourced right now? Maybe give us a feel for that, your view on that caseload that everyone's handling.
Yeah, that's, Councilwoman Strater, that's a, that's a great observation and comment. You know, right now, we have talked about that. We had, we had actually in the, in the, in the, in our budget plan, we had potential for adding another attorney on staff this coming fiscal year for FY twenty-two. We pushed that back a little bit because the trade-off of the workload volume is the lesser travel, the ability to be more concentrated at home for folks. So there's, there's some trade-offs to those things that allowed us to continue it without it feeling overwhelming. But we are always monitoring that. You know, we've, we've talked for a number of years about potentially the police services or the prosecution services changing model, but at this time, there's really no reason to. I mean, the, the, I will add one more comment about the city of Boise. In, in the sixteen years I've been the city attorney here, I've never had a complaint from the police department about anything the city attorney's office has told them, advised them, trained them, ever. They appreciate them greatly. So I, I don't see, I, I think we're going to, you know, we'll always keep that in mind as we grow, as things, things get back to whatever the next normal is going to be. We definitely want to make sure we don't get burnout, we don't get overload. We want to make sure people, you know, can take a vacation when people actually do those things anymore and they can go do things occasionally when people can do things. And so we may have to be very flexible about staffing in the future. But, you know, I'm not planning on going anywhere anytime soon. I don't think any of our team's planning on going anywhere anytime soon. But we definitely will keep in mind of the future for our office. We definitely would never want to leave the city in a bad situation where we don't have adequate staff.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Barton.
Just real quick, that last comment you made, Bill, is a big deal. Among everything else, the fact that Denise and Kevin and that leadership with our prosecution team and our police department having all their issues addressed accurately and timely, and there's not complaints and concerns, that's a really big deal. And hats off to you both in, in providing those kinds of services and prosecution services to the city of Meridian. Denise, Kevin, I've known you both for a long time. That's really appreciated. That's a very important point and it's a testament to the work in leadership that you're providing. Kevin, good luck to you. I don't know if it's retirement or, or, or changing careers somewhere, but you've been a hell of an attorney for, for a long time around the valley and a lot of us know that. So I appreciate you both and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nary, for that reminder of what 2020 was. I, I think I tried to forget a lot of the stuff that you reminded us that we did this last year, but very much. All right. Thank you, Denise and Kevin. Appreciate it very much. With that, we'll move on to item 13, which is the Planning Department Valley Regional Transit Fiscal Year 2021 Cooperative Agreement. And I will turn this over to Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Can y'all hear me okay? Okay, great. It's, it's my pleasure to be back in, in front of you all. It's been a little bit. So good to see you all, at least virtually on my, my screen. Before I get going, real quick, I do want to just piggyback on the last topic and thank Mr. Nary for his help and his team. I'm a little hurt that this topic we're going to talk about here wasn't highlighted in his PowerPoint, but they do a lot for our department. So I get it. I understand that. So again, thanks to, to the legal team. I'll also say I do have my, my puppy is here. I don't know if you can see her, but I should get bonus points since, you know, we're on this virtual call. I got a dog on the screen. So anyways, I'll, I'll jump into the topic at hand. Annually, the city does budget for VRT services and, and our dues. And we also annually establish a cooperative agreement between the city and VRT that outlines how the city funds are to be used. City staff from legal, so Ted Baird was the, the primary lead from legal, helping to craft this agreement. Members of finance, the finance team and planning, particularly Miranda, have been working with VRT staff to prepare the FY21 Cooperative Agreement between VRT and the city you have in your packet, which covers, again, how the $272,000 that we've got budgeted for their services, capital improvements, dues and overhead and assessments will be used. Some slight changes have been made from the, the FY2020 template. We've been using largely the same agreement for many years now. But we did have to update the, the template. Surprise, surprise, a lot of that had to do with COVID, right? And the associated CARES funding impacts. So we didn't necessarily reinvent the wheel with this agreement, but it, it got a pretty hefty overhaul. Stephen Hunt and Leslie Pedrosia are here. I see them on the screen. And they're going to walk you through some of those services that we receive with VRT and contribute to. And I will stand for any questions you may have, though, at the outset before turning it over to them for their presentation.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hood at this time? Okay. Then we'll turn this over to Stephen and Leslie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Stephen Hunt and I'm the Development Director of Valley Regional Transit and I'm trying to share a presentation, which I think you all see now. So as, as Caleb mentioned, we're here just to provide a, a brief update on the changes to the 2021 Cooperative Agreement. And a couple of things that we wanted to highlight with that is how the delay to the fixed route expansion impacted our original agreement. And, and then we will talk about other updates and then conclude with a discussion about the Veterans Transportation Pilot, which is something that's starting this year. So to start off, the, the VRT Board did approve delaying the start of the service in Meridian until FY22. And so our, our current program start date is October 1st of 2021. And reasons for that include the ridership decline that we've experienced because of COVID and the increase in telework, which we, we continue actually to see through the start of this fiscal year. Ridership has not rebounded. And so we're holding off on starting that service, which would have started this kind of late spring and summer until the fall of, of this year. We do believe that the service is still meeting its original objective or will meet its original objective of supporting both the residential unemployment growth that's occurring in Meridian and along the corridor. We, also with this delay, we would be applying the service credit in FY21 instead of onto the service, onto, onto other services that are provided in FY21. And that's reflected in the update to the cooperative agreement. So the agreement itself.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Stephen, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't know if you're going to be covering this later in, in your presentation. Are you prepared to kind of break down for council what those other services are? And where they're located and how they're benefiting Meridian residents?
I'd, Councilmember Cavanagh, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have a, a specific slide with those broken down. I can speak to them as they're presented both in the, in your packet. And yeah, I'd be happy to share more about the specific services that are being provided in FY21.
You can do that now or towards the end of your presentation, whichever is best for you. But I think that's an important piece to be discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Cavanagh, Councilmember Cavanagh. And I will do that on this slide as we talk about how the cooperative agreement is, has been updated. And one of the, one of the things that was included in this update is a service exhibit. And in that service exhibit, which again is included in your packet, is the description of the different services that are supported by the various contributions from the city of Meridian. So the cooperative agreement was updated both to reflect the delay in service and to simplify the agreement from where it had been and provide both transparency and flexibility in how we leverage resources that were available to us. This is what Caleb was alluding to when he talked about CARES resources being available to us this year. And what we wanted to document in the cooperative agreement is both the, the amount that we're requesting and what we are delivering in exchange for those contributions. And so we included a, a service exhibit, which highlights the services that are being provided to the city of Meridian. And those include, there's a, a regional overhead portion of that, which, which covers any of the VRT planning support efforts. So that would be all the planning work that VRT is doing with the city of Meridian on whether it be fixed route or the Harvest Transit Services or the pilot that we'll be talking about in a little bit. All of that planning work is part of that regional overhead along with support that comes through customer service and the transit IT, which is what supports things like being able to see where your bus is on your phone when you're, when you're scheduling a trip, et cetera. The other part of the contribution is the service contribution. And the service contribution is based on the number of miles, the percent of miles that are provided within the city limits. And currently, there are two fixed route services that make up the service contribution for FY21. And those are the Route 40 and Route 42. Route 40 is a route that begins in Caldwell, serves Nampa, serves Meridian and goes into downtown Boise. It's a peak hour service connecting those regional employment and residential centers in the valley. The Route 42 is similarly runs between Caldwell, Nampa, Meridian and Boise. It does not go all the way downtown. It goes to Town Square Mall in Boise, which connects to the, the rest of the fixed route network. It, it serves more of Meridian, however, it goes down Overland going, goes down Overland between 10 Mile and Maple Grove. So with stops all along the way. And, and that's been a corridor that we have been working with Meridian staff on in terms of thinking about how that continues to develop today, that, that's the service that is on the Overland Route, Overland Road corridor in Meridian. It's Route 42 and that runs throughout the day and provides local types of connections in both directions, both to Nampa and to Boise. And there's about 21% of the, of the miles on those two routes travel through the city of Meridian. And that's where, that's how that service contribution is, is calculated. This year, there was not a specific capital contribution. In years past, we've requested for capital when there is a need for capital that supports city of Meridian services. Last year, as you'll recall, there was a capital contribution request made for additional vehicles so that we would be able to provide the service that we will be providing at the beginning of FY22. And those were for two additional electric vehicles along with the, the pedestrian and passenger amenities and stops along in Meridian. And then there's a special assessment that we, that we make for our, for our partners when there are specific services or programs that support their communities. And in Meridian, that includes Harvest Transit as well as rides, the Rides to Wellness Program, which provides free transportation to medical appointments at participating clinics, including those in the city of Meridian. Harvest Transit provides transportation to, free transportation to seniors and persons with disability Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, excuse me. So the, the cooperative agreement outlines each of those, those services and the the role that VRT has in providing those services in exchange for the, for the fees. And I, I'll pause now if there are any additional questions about services that are provided to the city of Meridian in exchange for, for that, for those fees.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Stephen, I guess a, a two-part question. Part one is, is it then VRT's belief the city isn't already paying for those services? And I guess part two would be a, a breakdown of cost allocated to each of those items that are, that are identified in Exhibit 1.
Thank you, Councilmember Cavanagh. Mr. Mayor, your first question, is it our belief that the city does not pay for those services already? Was that what you asked?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, Councilman Cavanagh.
I guess even where I'm trying to get is, as I'm, again, maybe I'm, I'm not looking at this correctly. The city provides a funding allocation to VRT on an annual basis. And we increased our allocation this year with the belief that we were going to establish a fixed route service in Meridian. We're now not doing the fixed route piece, but VRT is still asking the city to fund at the same amount to go towards these four items that are identified in Exhibit 1. But my belief is that with our funding allocation, we've already provided funding for that. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if, if, if I'm wrong. And if I'm wrong, boy, it wouldn't be the first time. But if I'm not, I'm trying to understand why these additional funds are needed to go to these four items.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember. And I'll be happy to take a first stab at that, Caleb, if you want to follow up with anything else. So we are here talking about a cooperative agreement for, for the current year that we're in, in part because of some of the changes that were made late in the, in the, in the year, including delaying the, the start of fixed route service as well as incorporating CARES resources into, into the VRT budget. So we have not yet billed and Meridian has not yet paid the, the contribution for services that have been provided since October 1st and will continue through this fiscal year. That's what will be happening once this cooperative agreement is completed. So to your, to your point, the local cost allocation, the methodology that we use to, to determine what fees we would be requesting from the city of Meridian are the, the very same that we used in, in this process. It's one and the same. And the, so I hope that is, I hope that's clear. And the amounts that we're requesting for FY21, consider the fact that we have delayed the start of service until the beginning of FY22.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'll hop off this. But Stephen, there are, there are savings because we are not doing the, the route in Meridian.
Yes.
Okay. But you're wanting us to allocate those dollars that we would have already spent for the fixed route service in addition to what was already called for in Exhibit 1. Is that also correct?
No. There are about $170,000 that we had requested, that we had anticipated to request for FY21 that we are not requesting from the city of Meridian because we delayed service, because we delayed the start of service until the beginning of FY22. The original request, if I remember correctly, was about 442,000. And that's what we had been working with staff on. We, we have delayed the start of service until the beginning of next year. And no, there hasn't been an exchange of any funds for FY21 services as yet. And so the only requests we're making are those that we're asking for and, and describing in this presentation of 272,000. And I, the breakdown of those costs is, I think, was the second part of your question. Unless, Caleb, there was anything you wanted to add. Which would be about $60,000 or what, $60,000, $63,000 for the regional overhead. And with the contribution or the credit, the service credit that we rolled forward from FY20 into 21, there's only about $35,000, $36,000 in service contribution. There's no capital contribution. And the special assessment, those that are supporting Harvest Transit and the Rides to Wellness Program was 173,000. And that totals the 272. Happy to answer any other questions if there are any on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Just real, real quick, Stephen, I was just kind of curious. Under the Special Assessment Service Contribution, it's based on, on annual hours of service. And then under that funding made available through the CARES Act, the pilot service between Meridian and Boise Veterans Medical Center, it was based on annual rides. Was that just a requirement of the federal system on, on how to, how to help that?
Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, no, the, the difference just had to do with how we, how we end up being charged for those funds with some of the services like Harvest Transit, that's based on hours of service provided. Other, other funding models are based on, on trips provided. And the Rides to Wellness Program and what we would be doing with the, the Veterans Program is intended, is expected to be on a, on a per-trip basis. And so when we describe the, the budget for those programs, we express those in assumed number of trips.
Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Barton, did you have a question?
I, I did. I, I might have shared some of the confusion on the numbers and maybe this question for Caleb will put a, highlight it. Can you remind me, Caleb, in the August of 20, we allocated?
Budgeted back service. And we thought it'd be cleaner, working with finance, Todd and Jenny both recommended, let's not keep that on the books. Let's basically use that, even though it was budgeted for that this year. That way, we don't have to keep tracking it that way. Spend that and, and then not carry it forward again, but use that money. And then next year, we'll come in with an enhancement for that service. So the numbers- So the numbers do get, I, I apologize that it's confusing, but that's what finance recommended we do. I will just, and, and we can get to the numbers, I just don't have them handy. The numbers in August that you all approved for the budget, I think it's more coincidence that the, the, the dollar amount that we're spending that's addressed in the cooperative agreement is very, very similar to the budgeted amount that you approved in August. But to Councilman Kavner's question and yours, Mr. Barton, we aren't reallocating those. We kind of are, right? The fifty, fifty-one and change we are using, but we aren't fully spending what you authorized us to spend this August in FY twenty-one. So we'll come back next year with an enhancement for that. So it is confusing and I'm sorry, I don't have all the numbers in a nice table to show you how that works. But that, that is the case here. I will just, just also say some of that cost allocation method that Stephen mentioned did affect our, you know, year over. So for the last several years, we've been, we've been providing relatively a flat. You know, it's based on our, our population, some of it and service hours and some of that. That has also taken an increase. So those regular services that we receive from VRT have had a, a small uptick in our just regular dues, if you will. So that's again, I think some coincidence on why the numbers are really close, but hopefully that helps. And I will still, I'll look for that table because I do have one that shows the breakdown and get that to council so you can see that a little clearer.
Okay, thanks.
Council, any further questions at this point in time or would you like Stephen to continue? All right, Stephen, I'll go ahead and continue.
Thank you. So the last thing that we wanted to talk about is the, the Veterans Transportation Pilot. So I'm going to, I'm going to change slides and turn it over to Leslie to speak about this pilot program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Leslie Pedroza, I'm the Operations Director. And I'm the one that was challenged with helping spend that fifty-one thousand dollars you're all asking about with this pilot for Veterans Transportation. So I worked with our staff as well as city staff and we came up with an idea to pilot a transportation program that would offer within the same service area that Harvest Transit and Rides to Wellness provide service for and have transportation strictly to and from those residents to the Boise VA in downtown. So we're looking at starting in the spring of this year, pilot it through the rest of this fiscal year. Our service providers who currently give rides for the Rides to Wellness Program will continue to do the same rides for the same service. It'll be available seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. We made some assumptions, we assume we'll start with, you know, up to ten trips a day. And then, once we kind of pilot the program, see how it's going to work, see what those costs may be. Then we'll do the next steps to, to assess what it'll cost for the following years to come. Some of the, the way we'd fund this program is we pay a boarding fee plus a mileage per trip basis for each person. So those are the costs that we came up with and between now and the end of September, we don't expect to spend that full fifty-one thousand dollars. So that's, that's our plan is to not spend that amount, but that, that's what we're going to do with that funds to pilot this program and see. It's been a need, it's been asked about a lot from the riders of Harvest Transit of how they can get there. So we hope this will fill that gap.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
I'm a little, I don't want to muddy the waters, but I am having a hard time sort of tracking and following. It does say in, I guess, page five of the agreement that funding is made possible to get from Meridian to the veteran, to the VA, that that, that that funding is from the CARES Act. But then you're saying that there's this fifty-one thousand dollar credit that's helping to fund it. Is it both? And I guess just a general question. How does this compare to like giving people a, an Uber or something? Give me a feel for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strater. As far as the Lyft Uber option, we do have some programs that do use that first mile, last mile connection. And whatever the cost is, a person pays a flat fee and then we pay the balance of that ride. We chose not to do that with this option because they are not, for the most part, wheelchair accessible. So we wanted to make sure that we have that ability to provide the trips for anybody who needed to get to the Veterans Administration. So we opted to go with our providers now that are wheelchair accessible. Stephen, I don't know if you want to address that question about the CARES Act funding at your department?
Thanks, Leslie and Councilwoman Strater. I think the, we probably misrepresented the fifty-one thousand that was a service carry forward from twenty-twenty wasn't the source of, isn't the, those aren't the monies that are being used for this pilot. It is the CARES resources and the monies that I think we were able to save because of COVID and we were not having as many trips and as much demand on services that we had planned on through twenty-twenty. And so we were repurposing those resources, but it, it wasn't the, the fifty-one thousand that we've talked about a couple of times. That, that amount of money which was set aside for expanded fixed route service is being applied as a credit to what otherwise would be a larger service contribution.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I think I understand now. Curious, a pilot is a great idea to see if something is successful, but it's hard to take a service away once we start providing it. Do you have an estimate of what the annual operating cost would be for this program? So that we could know that, because in the future there won't be CARES Act funding?
I believe the estimated amount we did for an annual cost was around a hundred and seventy thousand, if I remember correctly. I will have to get back to you on that with the exact number, but we did allocate a, a whole year's cost as well.
Okay. Is that, sorry, is that for Meridian specifically? Our share would be a hundred and seventy thousand?
No, that's, that is the fully loaded cost. So that would be, a portion would be federally funded and then there would be a local match that you guys would provide.
Okay, that, that makes more sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, any few of the questions or any further information needs to be shared by Stephen or Leslie?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Either Stephen or Leslie, you talked about the, the Harvest Transit riders asking for this service. What's been the response from the VA? I was under the impression the VA provides a, a transit service already. And so I'm curious if I'm, again, if I'm mistaken, so be it. But what's, what's been the communication and direction from the VA about this?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman. So we did reach out to the VA. Currently, the disabled American veterans do provide transportation from Canyon County in. And they did say that they would make stops in Meridian on a space available basis. But for the most part, their vehicle does fill up in Canyon County before it gets to Meridian. So that limits the amount of rides that they would be able to take continuing on into Boise.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
I, I feel like that we're kind of, I don't know. I'm not getting a lot of direct answers tonight and it's, it's getting a little frustrating. Does the VA asking for this service or not?
No, it was not brought to us by the VA.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Kavner, I can only speak to that. This was something that was brought to my attention. Quite frankly, Rock of Honor event with veterans where they were expressing problems with using Harvest Transit does not, that does not go outside of the city of Meridian limits. So they were looking for a way to get the users which Harvest Transit currently serves to the, the VA, which is one of the main areas they need to go.
But I guess, Mr. Mayor, is it then they are choosing to not want to use the services that are provided by the VA? Or is it the VA is not meeting their, isn't able to provide? I guess that's the piece I'm, I, I'm under the impression that the VA will pick up people in Meridian and take them to the VA, whether it's part of a trip to Canyon County or not.
That is not the experience that the, has been shared with me by our local veterans.
Councilman Kavner, Mr. Mayor. So this pilot project initiated, has a conversation between city of, of Meridian staff and VRT to see what we might be able to create in terms of a connection between the city of Meridian and the VA.
Council, any further questions or comments at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
What's the next step that you or staff or VRT is looking for?
Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Kavner, council. So we do have this on, on your agenda for you to authorize us to enter into this agreement with, with VRT. I can share some of that information that we've talked about today. So you, I mean, we want you to be comfortable obviously with this. So I can show you the, the dollars budgeted for this year versus the, the cooperative agreement. If you want another week or, or two even, if, if need be. There isn't a, a dire need to approve this tonight if you're uncomfortable. So that was the idea going in. But you brought up some good questions and I, I feel like we should probably share some of that information with you first. So I, I think we can again, continue this to next week and, and we'll share the, the, the dollars a little bit more. And hopefully that's a little clearer.
That would be very, very.
Councilman Burton.
Yeah, I, I would agree that we're, we're obviously not ready to make a, you know, a, a recommendation tonight or to vote on anything. I, I, next week may work or even, you know, sometime into the future, if it's not imminent. It just, it looks like there's just a lot of questions that are unanswered, that there's a lot of confusing data that's not making sense. And so maybe we should circle back and make sure that, you know, the questions that were asked tonight are answered probably in a more clear way. So we have a better understanding of what you're asking us to do and what that looks like. And so whether that's next week or two weeks or three weeks, we just need to get it right. And, and so, so we're all on the same page.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a, a motion to move something or can we just add it at a future agenda that makes sense? Under Department Commission Report, so it's.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you can, you can simply add it to a future agenda.
Okay.
Or you don't have to do it today. We can, we can set it where our normal agenda setting.
Okay. All right. Then we will work to bring information to council within a more clear, concise way so that you can track what's being asked and the details of this process. And if we feel like there is, that information is shared, we can bring it back for a future conversation or revert back to what was originally approved in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. With that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Will we adjourn our work session?
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn, is there any discussion? If not, on favor, six, five, by saying aye.
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 Close nay, the ayes have it, and we are adjourned. Council, do we need to take a break before we start the next one or we just want to keep going?
Mr. Mayor, can we take like a five or 10 minute break?
Okay, we will get going back at ten after.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Counsel, we will call this meeting to order for the record at the 6:15 on Tuesday, February 16th. We will begin tonight's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Muted, but I saw him say here.
Perfect. Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all rise and join us in the pledge. Next item is our community invocation, which will be delivered by Troy Drake of Calvary Chapel Meridian. If you would all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection. That's true.
Mayor, council members. Lord God, thank you so much for this place that we get to live in and it's a free city and a free state and a free country. We appreciate all those who went before us to make it so. It's a great sacrifice for many to enjoy what we have. So we thank you, God, for those who protect us. Whether it's the firefighters, police officers, anybody that responds to things to keep us out of harms way. We appreciate them and ask for safety for our city tonight. Also, Lord, we're thinking about those who may be ill or fearful of being ill. God, we just pray that you would protect our city, the citizens from, from, you know, just any more of sweeping illness here. And, and, you know, that the people who need help would, would find it. Lord, we're also just praying for unity in our community. And Lord, it's divisive times and I just pray that we would desire in our community, unity amongst us, even in our expression of disagreement in many things, Lord. Ultimately, God, I just pray that people would put their hope in you and that you would rule in peace over, over this city. So thank you so much for that. And lastly, Lord, I just want to pray for our mayor. And, you know, what he's, his vision and what he's trying to do and the council members, those who work hard for us in this building. And we just appreciate them, God, and I pray that you would give them a lot of wisdom and that you'd help them in the decision making of the business affairs of the city. And so, God, again, we just appreciate you and appreciate this time that we can gather here in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Good night.
Counsel, next item up is the adoption of our agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as presented. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, the ayes have it, the motion is agreed to and the agenda is agreed to. Mr. Clark, do we have anyone sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, we will move on to action items. Our first item is a public hearing or H 2020-0119. I will open this public hearing with staff comments and turn this over to Alan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Alan Tiefenbach, Associate Planner with the City of Meridian. So this is an annexation and a zoning. The site consists of about an acre of land. It's zoned R1 in unincorporated Ada County. It's located at 2972 East Leslie, which is south and west of the East Eustick-North Eagle Road intersection. The adjacent land use property is bordered by the city limits on two sides. To the north is R15, to the east is R2, unincorporated Ada County. So the west, the comprehensive plan recommends this for low density residential. This is a proposal to annex and rezone one acre of property to R2 to obtain city services. The property is in unincorporated Ada County and it serves by individual well and septic. The applicant state, the applicant desires a constructed detached accessory building for an approximately 1750 square foot shop, RV garage and upstairs living area. The applicant's been unable to obtain a new septic permit from the city due to the location and limitations of the existing system to accommodate an additional bathroom. They want to have a living area above. The applicant has determined it would be cheaper to annex into the city and connect city water and sewer rather than upgrade the septic system. If the applicant chooses to use the upstairs living area as a secondary dwelling unit, it's subject to specific use requirements. This includes the living area being less than 700 square feet, at least one additional parking space required. And the property must be occupied by the property owner at least six months out of the year. The comprehensive plan is supportive of these types of accessory dwelling units. There are recommendations to support the construction of these and to increase the diversity of housing options. This annexation and zoning went to the planning commission at the January 21st hearing. There was no discussion and they unanimously recommended approval. Very simple annexation and zoning. And with that, counsel, I'll scan for questions.
Thank you, Alan. Counsel, any questions? Okay. With that, is the applicant with us?
Yes, I'm here. This is Mark Enos.
Mr. Enos, you're recognized for 15 minutes.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything to add unless there's questions.
Perfect. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who signed up to testify on this side of Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor, nobody, nobody signed up in advance. There are two people online, however.
Okay, if there's anybody that would like to provide testimony on this item, please use the raise your hand feature on the Zoom call at the bottom and we can bring you in. Or if there's anyone present and would like to provide testimony. I am seeing no one come to the podium and no one raised their hand. I will give the applicant if they would like to make any additional final comments that they've come up with in the last minute.
Not, not at this time.
Okay, then with that, counsel, do I have a motion or discussion? Councilman Cavanagh.
We close the public hearing on item one, H dash 2020 dash 0119.
Mr. Mayor, a second motion.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Planning and zoning commission did a good job reviewing through this. Couple of questions I had were addressed in the planning and zoning hearing. So with that, I move we approve item one, H dash 2020 dash 0119 as presented.
I got the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Byrne.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much, Alan, for being here and, Ms. Enos, have a good evening. Next up is ordinances. First item up is a first reading of ordinance number 20 dash 1916. Not used to ordinances where we have someone come up and speak. Do we need to have it read by title first or?
Mr. Members of the council, we could certainly read the title for the first reading. I think Lacey wanted to simply explain where these came from and why they are in front of you. Normally, we would have had this conversation ahead of time, but the police direction was to simply get it scheduled. So I think Lacey just wanted to explain it, but certainly reading the titles first is fine.
Okay, ask the clerk to read its ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's ordinance number 21 dash 1916, an ordinance adding a new section of Meridian city code, section 7 dash 2 dash 2B8, regarding prohibited parking in front of mailboxes, adopting a savings clause providing an effective date.
Okay, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Does he may like it's written in its entirety or any explanation of the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
So, yes, Councilwoman Strater.
Sorry, I didn't need the whole thing to be recited. I did just have a couple of questions about it.
Would you like, yeah, you're not there, so you don't see that we do have Lacey here to provide some details. Would you like her to explain it first?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here to discuss adding this new ordinance. Due to the pandemic, this addition to the parking regulations has been suggested due to the increase of essential packages, including medications through the USPS service for the groups more at risk, have been asked to give us the ability to restrict and enforce people parking in front of mailboxes to assure delivery in a timely manner of these essential packages.
Okay. Councilwoman Strater, does that help answer any questions you have?
Kind of. I actually did sort of want to follow up with a question.
Mr. Mayor, is this really appropriate or should we bring this back next week for staff? I'm just not used to having conversation in the ordinance section of our agenda, so I'm learning here.
Oh, Mr. Members of the council, I recognize this is a little unusual. I wasn't aware today that they had never, or I knew they hadn't presented anything. I didn't realize they'd never presented anything to the council prior. It's perfectly appropriate because this is an action item. So for the conversation, the reason we, I asked Chris to list this as a first reading only is so that we would have the ability to have the conversation.
Okay.
And then you can set it for second and third reading next week.
All right, just want to make sure we're doing this in appropriate fashion. This was, I think, a council request as part of this conversation anyway, so I'll go ahead, Councilwoman Strater.
Okay, thank you. I guess I wanted to understand the magic of the 10 feet of the mailbox. And I started thinking if we're in a more densely populated area with a lot of mailboxes and the homes are close together, if it's 10 feet each direction out from the mailbox, are we creating a situation potentially where we're going to have a lot of parking challenges? Just wanted to understand how the interplay between the request and what it actually might sort of mean for our parking.
I think it's just the size of the vehicle. We did ask the US Post Office if they had a standard recommendation. We looked at some other codes and that's what has mostly been adopted to give enough room for them to turn in and out of a mailbox. A lot of the higher density areas are going to have community boxes where the people are already moving to one area. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be individual house. For residential areas that are street side, I don't see that being a problem. There could be a problem in courts. That's the reason that we added regulations of hours and allowing Sundays and federal holidays not to be regulated.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but just for the discussion, I guess, I struggle a little bit with approving a change to an ordinance without feeling like the need is truly there, that it's not temporary from COVID and that this makes sense from a community development parking standpoint. I guess is just where I'm at. And I apologize if we wouldn't normally have a discussion during the ordinance. I'm not trying to upset the apple cart. I just, I just, I don't know. I'm not, so I'm not there on this ordinance. That's just where I'm at right now.
Thank you. I'll be honest with you. I thought this was already a rule of law. Anywhere I've ever lived, you're supposed to leave 10 feet parking away from your mailbox to begin with. So I was, I was surprised when I found it wasn't even an ordinance in our city or in our community.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I like you thought this was already.
I like you thought this was already part of, of the law in Meridian. But I guess my, my question is, you touched on these kind of community areas where everybody's mailboxes are located. And I used to live in a community that had that, but the parking stalls are, are right in front of them. And so I, I hear a lot from, from a code enforcement about challenges around enforcement. And so I worry about what type of challenges this makes for enforcement. And then, two, do we inadvertently create violators of people that are parking in front of their mailbox to pick up their mail? And, and how you as code enforcement will be able to rectify that? Because my assumption is if, if I'm parking in front of these community mailboxes, I'm immediately violating code. But that's the location that has been set aside for me to pick up my mail. So any insight you can provide in terms of enforcement around that would be helpful.
The community boxes are drop boxes from the back, so the mail carrier actually has to get out and deliver from the backside of those anyway. I, so I, I think that maybe there would need to be an exemption in place if it, we wanted to look into it being more in-depth to exclude those from enforcement. The second part of that question being?
Enforcement of, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Talk us through concerns about enforcement. Again, if, if I, if I work for the post office and somebody's parked in front of the mailbox, I assume I've got a call. And does the postal worker then have to wait for code enforcement to show up? And does that deter then people actually calling in violators? And what your response would be to those types of?
I think it's most similar to parking in front of a driveway. So our driveway ordinance doesn't allow for someone to park in front of their own driveway either, but we don't go seeking those. We wouldn't recognize them. I think that it would be something that would be an education-based warning system. We probably wouldn't stop unless we received a complaint. We do and have for years received complaints for people parking in front of mailboxes. And at this point, our only enforcement is to mark them for a seventy-two-hour violation and then return three days later to see if the vehicle's still there. So I think that it would just be one of those codes that we would respond to when we receive the complaints, that it was in front of someone's mailbox, it's not their own. Most of the ones that are residential do share with a neighbor. So hypothetically, if you're parking in front of your mailbox, you're preventing, yeah, the delivery of your neighbor's packages.
Counsel, any further questions or comments at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Cavanagh.
I guess a procedural question for, for Mr. Neri. If council goes through with the first reading and it gets scheduled for a second and third combined, does that automatically trigger a, a public hearing along with that? Or is that something else?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so a public hearing is never required. It's generally a request or a practice. So if the council would like to be, have that scheduled for a public hearing, what I would suggest is we only set it for a second reading and have the public hearing. So there's an opportunity for change if, if that's desired. But certainly if that's the council's request, we can.
Counsel, any further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Borden?
This was something that, that I was supportive of and, and had raised. And it was, it's, at its simplest, most narrow focus was the senior citizen who's not getting the medicine. I've, I've heard those calls and complaints, and that's, that's who's going to be calling. And if they're denied their ability to get some medical care by mail, that was probably the most pointed example where you would have someone calling right away. So that's, that's the origin of, of what this is trying to remedy. I'm sure if it goes forward at some point and we proceed, we'll have data on educational opportunities to those that might violate versus citations versus who's complaining. And very well could be refined as it proceeds down the road after its application. But that was the pointed focus of it, which I thought was something that could be acted on relatively quick.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Holgland.
Yeah, and I, I like the fact that there are exceptions to this, not on a Sunday or federal holiday. If Sunday afternoon and someone's having a birthday party in the neighborhood and cars are lined up, it's not a violation. There's no, nothing, no enforcement action will be taken. But yet, if it's during Monday through Saturday, eight to five, someone has somebody legitimately blocking their postal box, they can, they can call and, and seek rectification of that. So, you know, with, within limitations, I, I can certainly understand the need to, to have that open and available, especially as Counsel Borden pointed out, there is some very serious ramifications for, for some if it's not delivered properly and on time. So, yeah, I'm, I'm a little more open to these, these changes.
Can I read that?
Go ahead.
If we had the code on the books, it would give us the ability to go knock on a door and ask someone to move their car. If this isn't a regulation, we can't ask that courtesy of someone at this point. So just like blocking a driveway, it's not in our best interest to call it a tow truck and move a car if we can get a hold of someone. But at this point, we don't have the ability, or we're just arbitrarily asking for courtesy. So it does give us that ability just to remedy the issue without necessarily issuing a citation, but to have the situation fixed.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Borden.
For the most part, I, I think that this ordinance makes sense. I think that if, if, if it's a community mailbox area like the code enforcement officer mentioned, you know, they can get to those mailboxes through the backside. So I don't know if it's necessarily going to be a huge issue there. But if it is the pleasure of the council to have further conversation and discussion in a, in a public hearing setting, the mayor and I can discuss that. I don't think that'd be a huge.
Counsel, anything further at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Borden?
With that, it would just stay on for a second read next week?
I'm going to assume a second reading and we'll discuss what, what else. I always go, you know, it seems like we're going a little out of order. So I just want to, I don't want to commit. I want to work with the legal department on how this would, should move forward appropriately if we're going to have public input in that process in a way that makes sense.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, I, we could tentatively schedule for a second reading for next week, but we probably need to see, making sure that we can provide adequate public notice to be able to, to comment. And so it might need to get bumped a week. But let us, we can explore that in the morning. So we could tentatively set it for a second reading next week. And if there's issues around notice, we, we can bump it one more week after that to a second reading on the first meeting in March.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, up next is the first reading of orders number twenty-one-nine-seventeen. I will ask the court to read this ordinance, first reading by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance repealing and replacing Meridian City Code, Section four-two-one, regarding definitions related to nuisances. Amending Meridian City Code, Section, Section four-two-two-C regarding trees in public right-of-way. Amending Meridian Code, Meridian City Code, Section four-two-three-D-two regarding abatement of nuisance trees, adopting the savings clause and providing an effective date.
Counsel and public, you heard this read by title. Is anyone like it's read in its entirety? Or would anyone like to make any information available about this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Lacy, Meridian Police Department. The adopted proposed changes were suggested to us by the Ada County Courts, requesting a definition for what we currently listed as a dismantled vehicle. We didn't have a definition. Looking into what we currently had on the books, we currently call what we intend to be a dismantled vehicle, a junked vehicle. So this would just be a change of definition, title, changing a junk vehicle into a dismantled vehicle, leaving it to be better clarified and less objective when we stand in court. And the other section was that during the proposed change of previous nuisance codes, numbers were taken out of the system. And they would just be adding those numbers back into the sections.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Cavanagh.
I don't know if it's questions, just some comments. I've got some concerns with what's proposed here. We're looking at four-two-one-A. Number two, to me, the fact that we're talking to somebody who's missing a windshield wiper is a dismantled vehicle. I really worry about just the precedent that we set. Not to think that code enforcement is going around being the windshield wiper police, but I just, I'm always one that is really sensitive to the heavy hand of government and worry about really a lot that's included in lines one and two, and even line three. I, I just, I see scenarios where people purchase a vehicle with the intention of facilitating repairs or reconditioning or getting an antique vehicle of some kind. And what we see is that neighbor wars, you guys get pulled into those. And you become the referee and it becomes tit for tat. And I just, I see this open a lot of doors for somebody who's met at their neighbor to get you all involved. I specifically also online to, you know, you talk about trying to avoid things that are arbitrary. Again, I don't know what an adequate fender is versus an inadequate fender and how you would enforce that. Number B, again, graffiti, reading that. If I've got some sketching in concrete of when we moved into our home, I assume I'd be in violation. If in a tree in front of my house, I wrote LC plus AC with a heart around it, I'd be in violation. I know that's not the intent behind that, but as, as read, those are some real concerns. So I, I, I'm just, I'm letting you know, at this particular point, this isn't something that I'm going to be supportive of. And so I don't know how we can achieve what you or what the courts are wanting to achieve without overly burdening our residents with added code. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Neri?
Mr. Borden, members of the council, this is the current ordinance that's already on the books. So if the discussion is you want us to repeal it entirely, that's your only option. All this is doing is changing it from junk to dismantled. And part of the rationale is when the courts were concerned, I, I won't speak for code enforcement, but I know there are issues sometimes that people don't think is junk because they're going to repair it or they're going to restore it. But the neighbors are complaining because it's parked in the street. And so that's the part of the problems we're trying to remedy. So I don't think we've gotten calls from people that have a lawfully parked vehicle on their property that doesn't have windshield wipers on it. It's usually parts of cars that are laying all over the place and many times in the street. So that's, I think, most of the calls. I mean, I know some of them are on private property, but they're in an area where required they be stored behind a fence and not in the driveway. Mr. Mayor?
Counsel McCavanagh.
Mr. Neri, I mean, you, you've know my feelings again about some of our overhanded code around vehicles parked on their own property. If, if a vehicle is inoperable and parked on the street, that's handled within seventy-two hours. I, I personally, I don't think anybody would say if, if my truck, and I, I learned this this week when it snowed, my pickup truck was missing a windshield wiper. I, I do not classify that as a dismantled vehicle. I don't think anybody would classify it as a dismantled vehicle. But if approved, we would classify a dismantled vehicle as a vehicle that is missing a windshield wiper. And if that means that we need to repeal and start fresh, I'm supportive of that. Quite frankly, I think that is a, a good conversation for our council to have.
Counsel, just for the record, and I apologize that neither the council president nor I were present for the agenda last week. I won't allow future ordinances to come before you unless they've at least been a department report so we can have a conversation. And like I said, they won't show up on the same agenda. I don't like doing this conversation in the ordinance section. Quite frankly, when we get to this point in time, it should be perfunctory, not discussionary. So, Mr. Neri, if you can help make sure we do that in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Holgland.
Lacy, going to address the other section about trees in a public right-of-way and nuisance?
No.
Because I have a question about that one.
I think Matt Perkins has one.
Yeah, we have Matthew Perkins, who's our city arborist, who's online that can, if you have a question, go ahead and.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for, for having me. I'm happy to be here to, to discuss this matter. So my main concern with the way that the ordinance was previously written was that the, the adjacent property owners are responsible for maintaining and, and all the care of trees within the public right-of-way at their residences. That's, that is fine. I have no intention of trying to, to take that over. My concern is purely from a safety aspect because to me, as the city arborist, I'm supposed to be here as a resource for the public to help them understand how to correctly care for those trees that are an asset to the public. And it would be very easy for anyone to go out to a public property tree and administer a hack job to the tree, which would then render the tree into a hazardous condition that would be a safety problem for any, anybody in the public. So my interest would just be in trying to help educate, be here as the city arborist, as, as a community resource to help people understand how to better care for those trees in a manner that won't cause any public safety issues. I'll stand for question.
Mr. Holgland?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, thank you for that, Matthew. I, I was just curious, just needed more understanding of this. So if you have a tree that's in the public right-of-way, and I'm thinking of a subdivision that has common areas and whatnot, and sometimes those trees get grown and they've got branches coming into somebody's yard, do they need the, do they need to talk to you, your office, before trimming any of those branches that are hanging into their yard?
No, not necessarily. So my, my objective is not to, you know, interject into every single case of a tree being pruned. This all kind of stemmed from actually the nuisance tree code, which is written where, you know, like you said, if, if a, a neighbor has a tree that's on a, on a public property and it's causing a problem and say code enforcement gets called out to, to address the situation. And the, the code enforcement officers may not have the expertise to determine whether or not a, a tree is posing a hazard or not. So in that case, they call me and I come out and I look at the situation and I act as an interpreter, basically, to help them understand what the corrective action should be in that case. But it's not just for, you know, for every little, little dinky pruning job. It's, it's mainly just to prevent. Worst-case scenario, what, what I dream about is, say you're driving to City Hall in the morning and you're coming down Main Street. Many of those trees on Main Street are considered actually, you know, right-of-way trees. And so the responsibility for pruning those trees, especially north of Carlton, of the post office there, big trees that over, you know, overshadow the, the street and create a corridor that I would, I would just hate to be driving to work in the morning and all of a sudden see those trees hat-wrapped. And that, that's, that's the main thing that, that I'm concerned about.
Counsel Holgland.
Just follow up, Matthew. It sounds like that Section E is really the, the controlling part for all of this. Obstructs the free passage of pedestrian vehicle traffic, fails to provide vertical clearance of eight feet, fourteen feet over a street, those types of things that are listed there that really are, make it a nuisance tree. So somebody, a, a tree in the, in the common area hanging into a neighborhood, into a neighbor, into their yard, is not going to trigger any, any issue with, with that since it's not a nuisance tree. It's a nuisance to them, but it, it, and it won't impact the health of the tree. It's just trimming some branches to keep it out of their yard.
The ordinance already calls out that, you know, it's, it's. The ordinance already calls out that, you know, it's, it's unlawful to, to mutilate or improperly, you know, prune or cause damage to a tree or to pour chemicals on it or whatnot. So yeah, this is purely just, just to kind of create symmetry between my, my job as a city arborist, as it's, as it's listed in the ordinance and the, the nuisance code.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Matthew, a question about how, how does the public know if they have a tree that's in the public right of way? I, I think that our citizens, vast majority of them would want to do the right thing. But I could see again, somebody not knowing that. So how, how are, how does the public informed? How do they know if they've got a tree that's in the right of way?
That, that's a great question. It really is. And, and I've actually been working on an urban forest management plan that will be proposed for acceptance at least through Steve Sidaway, the director. And, and I'm trying to lay out all of these, all of these options where my, one of my main roles and duties as the city arborist is to work on education and community outreach and whatnot. So I, my, my objective is to continue on with community education classes and volunteer projects that involve the public to come in and put me in a position where I can educate them on, on these instances. So I'm also hoping to beef up our website, so to speak, so that there's a little bit more information there regarding, regarding the, the trees here in Meridian.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Matthew, I guess a two parter. Part one, when would that plan that you just referenced is anticipated to be completed? And I guess part two is how many trees approximate are private trees that exist within a public right of way in Meridian?
That's an excellent question. So I, I've only just completed the very first draft version of the, of the plan. And it's not been determined whether or not is going to be something that will, you know, maybe just be an internal document or if it's actually going to be something that will be presented to, to council for, for, for approval. To your second question, currently the city of Meridian, as the, as the code is written, we maintain all of the trees within our city parks and within our city owned in properties like police stations, fire stations and community centers and home, home, home court and city hall and a section of the, the entry corridor there called, oh, I forget its technical name right now off the top of my head. But up front, basically from Main Street to, to Carlton, from, from the railroad tracks. And then also you skip down and then all of those trees in front of the Meridian Speedway in that entry corridor there. So, so the, the inventory program that I have, that I've been managing all our trees with, I currently am responsible for managing 5,200 trees approximately. And those are just the trees that the city is responsible for. That does not count all of the right of way trees throughout the rest of the city or any public property trees at all whatsoever. So.
I guess the answer is we don't know how many.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was figuring. Okay. Because that could be overly burdensome if, if, let's say, every citizen's following the law and all decided after a big windstorm, they've got to do some pruning. You could see that be a, a heavy burden on the department if all of those homeowners are now contacting Matthew all at the same time. We don't know how many that are going to be impacted. So it'd be a conversation for another day.
Yeah. And, and emergency response plan is going to be part of that urban forest management plan that I'm working on. Currently, as the ordinance states, the, that responsibility for the maintaining those trees in public right of way are, is up to the adjacent property owner. ACHD, technically that right of way is theirs, but I believe their ordinance says, states the same thing. Again, like I said, my main concern is just from a safety point of view because, you know, I would like to prevent trees from becoming pruned in such a manner that would then actually make them become a hazard to the public.
Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Quick question, maybe a silly question. I don't know. But so like there's that weird, I don't, I only know it is like a hell strip, which is kind of inappropriate thing to call it. But there's this strip of land in between like this, you know, the sidewalk and the road. I actually had a tree die in that area in front of my house. And then I ended up cutting part of it. And, and so would that be a public tree? Like would I have needed to call you to get advice? Or how far does this go exactly?
That, that's a good question. You know, this, I could see how this could be a bit of a can of worms that we've opened up here. But as the ordinance is written now, that tree would be fully your responsibility to, to prune and/or remove. So yeah, but would you have to get permission to remove a dead tree? Not necessarily, but it would probably be in the public's best interest. I mean, for me, and so, I mean, refer to, say Boise has, has a similar ordinance, only theirs is much more broad reaching. Nampa has actually adopted an ordinance where their city arborist does do a lot of that outreach and you have to get permission from the city arborist to, to, to do anything to any of those public, public owned trees. And I could see how that would definitely be burdensome to a one man show such as myself. But like I said, it's not my intent to try and interject on every single case. And mainly this stemmed from my fear of having any of our large mature trees, you know, within our downtown corridor or, or any of those trees pruned in a, in such a manner that would actually end up, you know, causing the trees to become a hazard or have to be removed without any real good intent. So.
So Mr. Neri, just so, since, since we're not in the same sort of Robert's rules that I'm used to, to divide the question. But I do feel like we've ventured into single, you know, we've expanded beyond the scope of the state legislature of single issue items. And I don't know if, if we should bifurcate these two topics, if there's more discussion needed, e- even more information on the trees versus the, the issues related to the definitions. So I, I kind of want to throw that out to counsel where you, where we are right now on this issue. If this is something that we should separate out and have greater discussion and information presentation on these various issues. I would love to get councils, because I'm, I'm not getting a clear sense of what we all need to have. And this could, I, I see this rabbit hole going on all night.
Mr. Mayor, Emily's on the call as well and she's the one that crafted the ordinances. So she has the, the contact. But it may be best that we pull back this ordinance entirely, have a conversation and then decide at that point, are we? Because it's all one code. We're just fixing all the same code.
Correct.
But there are different portions of that code. So it may be best if we have a, a future departmental discussion on this nuisance code. And then we can decide, are we creating one major, one rewrite or a, only a partial rewrite?
I don't think any of this is time necessary immediately to move forward. Councilman Burr.
Yeah, that, Mr. Mayor, I completely agree. Like, like the mayor mentioned earlier, for the first time ever in the history of, you know, him and I working together, we weren't at this planning meeting last week. We were at a all city meeting preparing for our all city meeting. And so we were at a different meeting. And so we weren't aware that these were put on the agenda until after it was published. So I, I do believe it's important to have a discussion regarding these ordinances prior to reading the ordinances. I think it's pretty important to hash out the details and to make, you know, answer questions and have discussions. So I would recommend putting these on a future workshop so that we can discuss further prior to reading of the, of the ordinances. That, that would be my recommendation. Going, talking about these two ordinances and going forward as well.
Counsel, if it works for you all, then the, we, we will schedule appropriate times to come back and have greater information, walking through the proposed changes and discussions on what that means.
Mr. Mayor, just so I'm clear on both the mailbox parking as well as the nuisance code?
I think that it doesn't hurt to do them all. And we can hurt, we can put the mailbox one more rapidly since that does have some or more necessary emergency or I don't want to use emergency, real life consequences.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Question for Mr. Neri. Since these are action items, do we have to take action to do something with them?
So yeah, we probably should put on the record at least what the direction is next, which is to bring both of these items back as separate discussion items at a future meeting. I think that's, that's adequate as long as the consensus of the council is to do that.
We need that in a motion, Mr. Neri.
Yeah, I think to make the record clear, yes.
I have a motion as such, Mr. Holden.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I would move that the ordinances under items two and three, ordinance number 21-1916 and ordinance number 21-1917 be withdrawn from tonight's agenda and brought back at a later date after further discussion.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We will bring these back in appropriate fashion over the coming week and/or month. With that, we've identified future meeting topics. Are there any other future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Not a, not a topic. Just I wanted to, to thank you and commend you. You heard from the city attorney about the work that has went on in the city over the past 11 months. And I thought your email that you sent to our employees that were kind of hopefully on the downhill slide and coming back to work in a somewhat normal fashion was really appropriate. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to, Mr. Neri's presentation was a good reminder to me that, just to take a moment, thank you and all of our city employees for their ongoing flexibility. I can't think of a, a single frustration or complaint that I've heard from the public about operating with city services over the past 11 months. And I know that doesn't happen by accident. That's as a result of your leadership and the buy-in from our, our employees. So I just wanted to thank you and thank all of our employees for their great work over the past 11 months.
Thank you. And you'll get an opportunity to do that once again in eight days for all the employees. But with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, one, one last thing.
Councilman Burr.
Just, you know, I, I don't want to get into a discussion, but I, I definitely wanted to make a comment in regard to current legislation that's, that's on the table with regard to property taxes. And so I, I encourage every city council member that's sitting at the dais or home, you know, participating virtually to look through the proposed legislation and, and, and if, if you have concerns, reach out to your legislative representatives and, and also county commissioners as well. And so I think it's extremely important that we all get involved. The development community is already involved. The realtors are involved. There's a lot of decision-making bodies that are involved. This has a significant impact on not only our city, but all cities across Idaho. And so again, I don't want to get into a discussion, but this committee hearing is scheduled for Thursday at 3:00 PM. So I, I think it's important that we rally the troops and, and make sure that, you know, those who are sitting on the, the, the committee are heard that from us and from others. And, and our, our legislators who represent us in the four districts, you know, that are in Meridian are also heard as well. So that's what I wanted to say.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
It may be appropriate, I'll leave it up to you and, and the council president to maybe have a, a reoccurring item on our workshop between now and the end of legislative session. So we're, we're noticing these types of conversations appropriately. And if we need to discuss things further, or if there's an action that wants to, needs to be made by the council, we've at least noticed it. I think Councilmember Burr brings up a lot of good points. And I know in the past, we used to have an agenda item where the council would discuss pending legislation. And it may be worth at least exploring having that as a conversation topic for the next few weeks. So I'll leave it to you and, and the council president to see if it's warranted. And if not, it's okay. But just a thought.
Thank you. With that.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanagh.
With that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Move adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion as second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Have a good night.